How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Hey Amy?
Yes.
I just talked to Ed, he said that you couldn't print out your minutes. I don't see that I got them to read them off.
Let me try to send them to you because I'm having a lot of problems with my computer.
Alright, that's fine.
Let me try.
Hi Kathleen, hi Sean.
Hello again.
Amy's gonna email me over those minutes now Ed, okay?
Okay, I can't find them on my computer either Amy.
Oh, I just sent him out a few minutes ago because I'm having problems with my laptop.
Okay.
Crystal, you want me to send them to your town email?
Yeah. It's pretty much the only email I ever sent. Well, no, nevermind. Yeah, the other one is swamped with school emails.
Okay.
Thing has been fun. That was a joke.
Did you get them?
Not yet. There you go, someone left.
Thanks Crystal, I appreciate it.
It's been this back-to-school thing's been how, well, Mary, I've got all four of my kids home. So I'm doing the virtual school at home.
I'm just finishing my dinner, so I just want to let you know I'm not on video, okay?
Mary, I just finished mine, it makes you feel any better.
Okay.
Oh, oh, hold on guys, I got it.
I'm finishing my dessert and I eat it right in front of you. No, I won't actually.
Does everybody like the freezing weather already?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be in the 80s by Friday.
Yeah, but this morning was 31.
Yeah, a little chilly.
Up to you. You want me to keep it on while I'm here? I can't, you tell me. As long as you're comfortable, I'm happy. I have to decide which design to wear this evening Ken. I was like, should I, well, should I wear like, you know, I have zombies, maybe all sorts of fun ones. Well, the shirt's got flowers, oh yeah. My little skull. Next time I'll wear puppy paws. Amy, I still didn't get it. Does it say that it was sent?
Yes, let me try going back to it.
Hold on, oh, no, wait, I got it, I got it. There it is, 817, okay. You got it.
Crystal, when you got it folded onto me too.
Took the calculator, that's the power cord still there.
It's supposed to be at 615, right Ed?
Say again?
It's supposed to be at 6, oh, 6, I thought 615.
615, yeah.
Oh, 615.
It told us 6:30.
Oh, you told Jackie 6:30?
Just to come in at 6:15, we're gonna start at 6:30.
You guys are killing me.
Crystal, you have your kids home all four days?
Five days, yes.
Oh, five days, yeah. Alyssa goes Thursdays and Fridays to school.
No, the older two, they were afraid to go and the younger two wanted to go, but I wasn't gonna send them all.
Right.
So we decided to keep them all home, so starting at 9:00 AM until like 3:00, 3:00 PM, we have lots of schoolwork to do.
Oh wow, I bet.
Mm-hmm, but you know, honestly, I feel like the students that are, for our district, the students that are completely virtual, are getting almost more assistance than the kids that are doing the hybrid.
Right.
It's more consistent. Because, like my kids compared to like DS kids and Kelly's kids, there's a lot more information that we have, a lot more understanding of how to do on the days off, we have a set schedule and we're almost, I want to say we're at least like half a week ahead of everybody else with the curriculum. Like we're moving, my kids, they go on, we know exactly what is due before the meeting, you know what's due later on in the day because they have a meeting in the morning and a meeting in the afternoon. So it's, it definitely took a little while for some of the kids to kind of chill out, but.
They adjust to it, it's a whole new thing.
It is, it is, but they're loving it because when they're not in their meeting and they're not doing the work, they're outside.
Yeah.
So.
I wish I could be outside.
Take your computer and go sit outside.
I try to. It's attached.
Mary, my niece in the city doesn't even.
I thought you had a network?
What?
My niece in the city doesn't even have a classroom.
No, probably not. They're starting to collapse classes so that what's happening is more and more people are going remote. I think the percentage is almost up, it's been a long time Kenny, 56, so I think it's almost up to 60 now. Percent of all students are fully remote. And we don't even have the kids in the building yet. So, we'll see.
You don't have the kids in the building at all?
We had, ready for this, pre-K today, guess how many kids came today?
10?
Two.
Two? Wow. Out of how many?
Pre-K, I think, I don't know how they split it in cohorts, but I want to say probably two, probably six or 10 kids and then kids were just showing up because they were showing up. And we had to turn them around.
Wow.
It's, it's sad, it's really sad and it's just unfortunate, they just can't figure it out.
I want to say that every week we get more children added to the complete virtual learning.
Yeah, eventually I think by October 1st, because they sent in, they, which didn't make sense to me, the most vulnerable students, which is District 75, and those buildings were not even ready, whatever. I don't work in one of those buildings, but, and then they sent pre-K and 3K and they're a very vulnerable population, I don't know what they're doing and it's just crazy. I mean, a pre-K is five, so, and a lot of our students are, I would say, all my students except two are gonna be virtual. So we'll see what happens. Take one day at a time.
Well, I see Jackie has joined us.
Good evening.
We have a few minutes, we scheduled 6:30 for a start. We're still lacking, I don't see, wait a minute. No, I don't see, is Joe?
Barry's not here?
I don't see Barry, I think it's, and John are the only two we're missing.
Yeah. Well, oh, and, no, no. Ken, you're not in yet, I just realized. And Kenny, Kenny's coming.
Isn't Kenny where it says Town of Trusten?
No, that's me.
Okay, you have two blocks?
Yes, I always do, Kenny's over there, you see him? A network password and username, why? All right, I mean, I can get you on the internet. Trying to call Jeff. We got rid of the old server. That's what it is. Hey Jeff? I'm having a little hiccup right now.
There's a point of interest before we start, did everybody get the map, the new map for Eagles Lite for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
This will be the last time we'll get them on Zoom and on the internet because from now on, I'm gonna require full, full layouts on a big piece of paper for big boys.
Jackie, do you want me to share your training? The training pamphlet PDF? On the screen or no?
Um, that's, sure.
I don't have to, I'm just asking.
No, I just don't know that it's, I mean, it might be helpful, it's, um, it just has some references for the board members use for future, but that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, it's really just a rough outline for me, it's not really a script.
Okay. Does anybody, you guys want me to share it, Ed?
I have, did everybody print it out? I have it printed out.
I can print you a new one.
Yep, Crystal, it's only a few pages.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah?
Jackie, I noticed on here, on the overlays, it doesn't show the scenic byway.
What?
Then it's not included in your code.
I believe it is. If I'm not mistaken.
Um.
Did byway come after the code?
Scenic byway is an overlay district?
Yeah. I believe.
I didn't see it, I went through your code pretty thoroughly, I only found four overlay districts.
We require a different set back there.
Okay, and how do we know that?
I think, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's a, it was a local law.
Well, if it's a local law out there that didn't get put into your town code book, I would have no way of knowing that.
That, is that the new book or the old book you're using?
It's, it's the book I was given that has the March two thousand twelve zoning law.
That's the current one.
That's the current one, Ken said. Kenny, you gotta turn your camera on.
That's who I'm using, even though they rewrote a new one already, we haven't got it yet.
Well, I understand that there's some changes that are being proposed to the bulk tables and some other areas, but, um, again, I don't, I don't recall seeing scenic byway as an overlay district.
I don't have my book here at home, so I can't tell.
And the other thing is that your overlay districts aren't all contained in one section, you got to really read through it, they're kind of scattered around. Yeah, so under, under the district section, it has the first overlay zone is floodplain. The second is scenic overlay. Is that what you're thinking, is maybe scenic overlay, scenic byway?
No.
Excuse me?
I have to see the writing again, I don't remember.
It says it's two hundred and fifty feet on either side of Route ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's called the scenic overlay, maybe it was called scenic byway in the past?
Yeah, one time it was the scenic byway.
Um, in the code now, it's called scenic overlay?
Okay, then I'm corrected.
Okay. Um, right, and then there are additional regulation, well, do you want me to get started or are we still waiting?
Because I guess the other guys aren't going to show up.
Okay. So, good evening. Um, I, I, I wish we were in person, um, if there's, you know, feel free to interrupt, um, I don't know if I'll be looking up so much, so just, you know, give a shout or something if I, if I, if I'm, if I say something that you don't understand or you want further explanation, so, start with, um, this is, this is New York State town law, so a lot of times you'll hear about town law, local law, town code. The New York State town law is what defines your duties and responsibilities and your powers as a planning board. Because New York has what's called municipal home rule, each local municipality is able to either live by the rules of the state or develop their own, your, your town is chosen to develop its own code. And that is your town code book that hopefully you will all have copies, at least the zoning and subdivision sections, so you'll be familiar with that. The other thing that you can rely on when you're looking at your applications in addition to your, your town code is your comprehensive plan. I know that you're going through a review of that right now, but your comprehensive plan in theory is the master plan for the development of the town. The zoning laws should implement whatever the policies are that are contained in your comprehensive plan. So the comp plan is your foundation. There's more specificity in the town code. You as the planning board, you are a public body, you are all public officers, you are all governed by the public officers law, including the open meetings law, which if we have time, I'll deal with that at the end. You are officers of the town, your obligation is to act in the best interests of the town, to review, uh, your projects fairly, however, you all have your own personal experiences and your own personal knowledge from living in the town. Just because you're a member of this board doesn't mean that you can ignore what you know about a particular neighborhood or a particular parcel, you're expect, you're expected to share your knowledge with your other board members if it's relevant to an application. So even though you're supposed to be fair and impartial and act in the best interest of the town, if there's something that's not part of an application that you're aware of, you can certainly feel free to volunteer that. So your two main powers are site plan review, special use permits, and subdivisions. The function, I like to repeat this often, the function of the planning board is to regulate the use of the land, not the business that's using the land. Okay? So there's admittedly, um, very fine line, sometimes, the most popular thing is hours of operation, because the hours of operation of a business will impact the neighborhood, noise, traffic, and whatnot. And those are the areas that get to be kind of gray, so those are things that you can take into consideration when reviewing a, a project. But you can't necessarily dictate how the applicant is running the business, and, and I'll get into that a little bit more, it's admittedly, um, difficult and a gray area, but there's ways that it can be approached, so. Starting, starting with zoning, most of what you know you're going to do in zoning is site plan review and special use permits. You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven zoning districts. And these zoning districts are set out in your bulk tables. Uh, the bulk tables, if anybody has a book, um, they're page forty-two in my book. Each district has a page, and that will tell you what uses are permitted in the zoning district, if they're permitted as of right, such as a single family residence, or if they need some kind of approval from this board, such as site plan review or special use permit. Um, I, I do believe, I, I haven't seen any uses that are only site plan review, anything that's not permitted seems to be a special use permit, but in your code and the application for a special use permit also includes a site plan. So for most part, you're going to get special use permits with um, a site plan already included with it, so your bulk table has your uses and your dimensional requirements, that would be lot area setbacks, lot coverage, building height, those kinds of dimensional qualities. Uh, whenever I get a project, the first thing I want to know is what zoning district is it at? I open up the bulk table, is the use there, what are the requirements, what are the bulk requirements? The second thing that you would need to look at is if the prod, if the property is in an overlay district. And I have found four overlay districts. Two of them are included in the overlay district part of the code, um, section three. But as I read through it, I found references to other overlay districts. One is the Upper Delaware Scenic and Recreational River Corridor. And if a parcel is in that overlay district, it must conform to the standards in the Final River Management Plan of nineteen eighty-six, which I pulled up on the internet, and it's really, really long. There's also a wellhead protection area overlay district, uh, and that's a local law of two thousand and one, which Crystal was kind enough to send to me, so thank you. And that, um, requires site plan approval for all non-residential uses, so, the, the bulk table gives you the dimensional requirements, the overlay districts, if a parcel is in the overlay district, those are your development standards. Okay, so the, um, the overlay district will tell you how the property can be developed in terms of where the buildings can be located, if there's any restrictions on landscaping, land clearing. Signage is sometimes included, so, uh, the overlay district is something else that you want to pay attention to. So now you've got your basics of what a project needs to have. Um, it's either going to be permitted, or it's going to be permitted with a special use permit. So going back to your bulk tables, once you identify what it is, then you want to see if there's any specific standards for that particular use. For example, you have specific standards for, let's see, um, bed and breakfast, campgrounds, dog kennels. So you want to look at what those requirements are, make sure the site plan conforms to that. Your bulk table also includes accessory uses, and I'm sure you're all familiar, and accessory use is something that is subordinate to the principal use but directly related to it. You have, uh, customary, what is the use? So accessory uses are permitted in all the zoning districts, and they include customary accessory uses. These accessories can only be in the side or the rear yard. They have to be ten feet from the property line and the principal building, if you get a project and they want to put an accessory in the front yard, they're going to need an area variance from the ZBA because the code only permits side and rear yard. In addition to what's listed in your bulk tables for those projects requiring a special use permit, under section ten, I'm sorry, take that back, under section eight, there are some additional uses that need a special use permit, such as a disturbance of one acre or more, which I thought was kind of interesting. So it really helps to be pretty familiar with the code because not everything is necessarily, um, contained where you would hope it would be. If there is a non-conforming use, and being that this code is only from two thousand and twelve, which is not that old, I imagine that there are probably quite a number of pre-existing non-conforming uses, so let me just digress and spend a minute on that. If a parcel or a building was in compliance with the zoning prior to the new code being in effect, that is a pre-existing non-conforming because it was in conformance at the time. However, if there is this rogue parcel or this rogue building out there that was never in compliance with the code at the time, it will not be a pre-existing non-conforming and will need to comply with whatever the current standards are. Interestingly, most codes I've seen do not allow any extensions, extensions or changings, changes to non-conforming uses, and the reason for that is when a town decides that a certain use is no longer permitted, they pretty much want to eliminate that and don't want it to continue, so most often, those non-conforming uses cannot be enlarged because in theory, the town doesn't want that use anymore in that district. Um, in your code, however, a non-conforming use can be extended, enlarged, or changed, um, but again, it needs a special use permit. And there's certain criteria for that. So as I said, when you get a project, you're going to look at your bulk tables, your overlay, and if there are any, um, regulations specific to that use. There are also general performance standards that will apply to every project. And those performance standards usually deal with things like, um, lighting, landscaping, drainage. Uh, that's article VI. And page seventy-three. So there's a whole bunch of, um, standards that will apply to every project. Parking, off-street loading, lighting, yards and buffers, electrical disturbance, noise, vibration, smoke, landscaping, sewage disposal and water supply. So you want to take a look at all of those performance standards to make sure that they are all addressed either on the site plan or in a narrative that you're getting from the applicant. So what do we need in a site plan? That is section eight point three-three, page one oh eight. And, um, starting there, it tells you all of the information that needs to be shown on the site plan. Everything from, you know, the name of the property, the, the directional arrow, grading, design, pedestrian access, outdoor storage, and what you need to, um, pay particular attention to as you're going through all of the requirements is what, of what needs to be on the site plan. Um, you may need to refer to other sections of the code, um, for example, signage, so the site plan needs to show the location size and design of any signage for a property. Well, if you want to know what that signage needs to be, uh, you have a whole section on signs. So you need to refer to that section, make sure that everything that's required is there. In addition, if it is a, uh, project that has its own regulations, like a bed and breakfast or kennel, um, there might be some sign regulations particular to, uh, that use. So you want to make sure that you look at, um, the more specifics, um, outdoor lighting is another thing that needs to be shown on the site plan. And again, there are more specific regulations for outdoor lighting on page seventy-six. So it can be pretty, um, cumbersome, but once you kind of get used to the code, you're going to see, it's going, it's going to be the same thing over and over. Uh, you just need to be aware of where you can find what the requirements are. Right, parking is its own, right, signs. So once you have a complete site plan and everything is included, or you have waived it, um, we'll deal with waivers in a minute. The next thing that you would do is to see whether it meets the criteria for a special use permit. And those criteria are on page one oh seven. And there's a whole list, A through L, and these are the different factors that you would take into account. Keeping in mind, um, a special use permit is just that, it's special. This is something that the town has determined. This is a use the town has determined should not exist in this zoning district unless it meets all of the regulations for the use and it's in accordance with the criteria. Now, when you look at the criteria, it's not, um, a yes, no, or they meet six, but they don't meet two, it's not that kind of thing. These are considerations that the board needs to take into account to determine whether or not the special use can be granted because it does not interfere with the character of the neighborhood, because it's not going to be disruptive to the other residents, because it has adequate lighting, adequate emergency access, it's not going to be a detriment. So these are just kind of things that you take into account and put them all together because the town has said, when you're, um, reviewing a special use permit to determine whether it should be granted, these are the things that you need to keep in mind. If you determine that it does, um, you know, fall into compliance with the criteria that the town has established, you can put conditions on a special use permit, those conditions must be reasonably related to the use of the property. Those conditions must be reasonably related to the use of the property. And those conditions can be, there's no right or wrong rule about what the conditions are. They're specific to each individual project. It might deal with noise, it might deal with, you know, when certain parts of the property could be accessible based upon other things going on.
I have a question.
Yes, Mary, I know, I'm like just babbling on here.
No, 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 because I want a little more clarification. But you can babble all you want, I mean, I'm listening, but I have a question. So talking about the special use permit, I know there's regulations that we have to follow, zoning regulations, town law, state law, and everything like that. But you're talking specifically about certain criteria that also has to be met. Now, as a board member, let's say that, you know, it's a little vague in the sense of, like, in my opinion, I think it's vague, I'm not really happy about it in the sense of, I don't know, even though it meets certain criteria, but not all of them. As a board member, can you say, you're not going to vote, you'll abstain, or you'll say no to the special use permit? Just based, you don't always have to say yes based on the fact that this criteria is laid out, but sometimes there may be a gray area that's just not feeling right or fitting right, in my opinion. Am I correct? Or do you have to, do you have to say yes and go ahead? Or you abstain? I'm asking you.
That's a great question. Okay. However, you are frozen on my screen.
Did I stump you on that one?
You're, hmm?
I figured that, because we've been in positions like that.
I'm sorry, Mary, you're frozen, I'm losing you.
We've been in positions like that, you know, in the past few years with a lot of review. Oh, am I frozen? Is that better?
You're back now. Can you, can you just repeat what you were saying a minute ago?
All right, am I there?
Yes. We don't see you, but you sound great.
Okay. So let me just, I'm sorry, it's the internet, everybody's doing it down here.
Mary, I turned your video off.
Okay, good. All right, well, that's a good thing. So what I want to know is the following. We've been put in, not, we've been, okay, good. Thank you. So my thing is that we've been, things have come up on the board before in the past many years, since I've been on, and just wanted to know what your thoughts were about that.
Sure, great question. Okay. So when, 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 okay, I view my role as making sure that your board follows process according to your town code, you follow all the steps, and that when you make a record, it will be sufficient to withstand a court challenge. Okay? So, Mary, I will answer your question, you just got to let me get there. Okay, so if you, if you deny a project, the applicant can appeal it in Article 78 to the Supreme Court. The first thing the judge is going to look at is the record that was made, and that would be your meeting minutes. If there is something about a project that a board member thinks is not suitable for the town and that the special use permit should not be granted, that board, and as a result of that, will vote no on the project, that board member needs to give a reason. Okay? It cannot be arbitrary and capricious, which is a legal standard. It must have a substantial basis. So if you say that, I'm just pulling one, adequacy of water supply, that's not a good one, let's find a good one. Okay, so screening and landscaping, always important to every project you're ever going to look at. So the applicant is only willing to do a certain amount of screening. You, as a board member, think that's not adequate, especially in the winter months, if they're doing something that's not evergreens, and it's, and there's, you know, a nursery school next door, and this is a meatpacking plant, and you don't think that the screening is sufficient, you want them to put up a fence, you want to do something else, and they're just not willing to do it, because they don't want to do it. This is, if they take the position, this is the project that we're submitting, and we're not willing to do more. And if that's your good faith basis and substantial reason to deny the project, then by all means, when it comes to your deliberations, you, as a board member, would need to express, I'm not in favor of this project, because they're not going to provide adequate screening, they're not going to provide adequate landscaping, and go ahead and vote no. If a majority of the board shares your feelings, and maybe not for the same reason, maybe for a different reason, there might be another board member who says that it's going to have a detrimental impact on neighboring properties, because the use is something that, I don't know, is going to be too noisy, or it's going to be, and you can't put any conditions to address that. Or they're not putting in adequate traffic access, or you have a concern that emergency vehicles aren't going to be able to access the property. Or it's designed in such a way that there's obstacles getting to the building, that there's not a smooth flow, whatever the, whatever the issue might be. If the board member, as long as the board member expresses the basis for their denial, that's fine. But at the same time, you have to kind of look at the project as a whole, and not all projects are going to be able to address all of the criteria just by the nature of the project. It might be that, you know, something may not apply. Did I answer your question, Mary? Did we lose Mary?
Oh, I'm here, that's fine. I got a good idea of it, thank you.
Okay, did I, did I go too far around? Do you want?
No, not at all, not at all. You just have to have a reasonable basis of why you would be voting no for a specific project.
Correct.
Because I don't want, I don't want it to go. It's just a matter of, it's just factual in the sense of not like black and white, but the fact is that it could interfere with the neighbors. It could cause undue stress on the road, you know, certain things that as a planning board member, we have the right to express that. So we would not, in essence, it wouldn't come back to just us by just saying that we don't want it. It has to be more factual, correct?
Hundred percent. And it has to be related to the, it has to be related to one of the factors. You can't just say, I don't like it because I don't like it. You have to say, I don't like it because, and, right. Like, and so, for example, I just thought of something. If, I always use the example of a shoe store. So I'm going to put in a shoe store, but I'm getting tractor-trailer deliveries that are coming, you know, twice a day, every day, and it's going through a residential neighborhood. Well, the board could say tractor-trailer deliveries in a residential neighborhood is too disruptive. Okay, so as the applicant, I can either come up with an alternate way to get my deliveries, or you can deny the project. So as long as your, as long as your reason for not approving is related to one of the factors, you'll be fine.
Okay.
And, right, and if I'm ever at a meeting when you're considering a special use permit, and as you're hopefully reading through each of the factors and discussing them, if I hear somebody say, you know, location and general site compatibility of buildings, yes. You're going to hear me piping up from the side saying, because. Finish the sentence. The location arrangement and size is fine to issue a special use permit, because it's keeping in the character of the neighborhood, it's the same size and dimensions of the other uses in the neighborhood, there's something similar down the street. I mean, you can't, it's not just a yes or no. What I need to get across to you is that when you're making these determinations, it requires real discussion. Okay? Because if all I see, or all a judge sees in the minutes is, we looked at the criteria and approved it, with no understanding of what was discussed or the basis for your approval, if that's challenged, you're going to lose. So that's why it's very important to have a lot of discussion and for all of it to be included in your minutes. So if there is a challenge, I have something to rely on. There might be conditions, and I'll get to the procedure in a minute. But, you know, Mary, if there is something that you're looking at in a project that you have concerns about, I would absolutely encourage you to express that and share it with the applicant, because maybe there's a way that they would change the project. Or maybe there might be a condition that can be put on the special use permit that would be to your satisfaction, so the project could continue. So that's why an open, an open discussion, a lot of exchanges with the applicant, I always encourage. One of the, in my opinion, most powerful powers that you have is the waiver. Okay? So I've just spent half an hour drilling into your heads, criteria, criteria, regulations, you got to go by the book, you know, you got to look at 17 sections of this book when you're reviewing an application. However, you can waive any requirements for, I believe it's the site plan and the special use. And that is 8.1.4, page 105. And then there's a whole procedure that the applicant needs to go to if they want to request a waiver. So you can waive any requirement for the approval of a special use permit or a site plan that's submitted to you. For example, one of the requirements that they have to show on the site plan might be grading and drainage plan. But if they're not really going to be doing that much disturbance, and, you know, they can just kind of do it with a little note or an explanation, and not maybe go through a whole sweat, you could waive that. If there's other things that might just be very burdensome because of whatever the natural topography is, that would be difficult for them to show upon application, you can waive that. And the procedure is set forth in the code. So if there is part of the special use, and again, going back to all those criteria and factors, maybe there's something that they don't want to have to address, because it's not applicable, they can ask for a waiver. They need to make the waiver request in writing, and they need to justify the request for the waiver due to unreasonableness or hardship. And if they are requesting a waiver, that's something that hopefully comes up early on in the process. But that is a very, very strong power that you have, and never lose sight of that. So generally speaking, the procedure, and I'm sure you're all familiar with this, having been on the planning board, but I just want to run through it quickly. Your code calls for a sketch plan first, which if they want to do a sketch plan, fine. If an applicant wants to come with a full-blown site plan the first time, if they want to do that, I don't think they should be discouraged, because they're just trying to move the project along. So they need to have a completed application, their site plan, and an environmental assessment form. Every project should start with a short EAF. However, if it looks like a project that's going to be more involved, then you can certainly ask them for a long form. If it turns out to be a Type 1 action, they're absolutely doing the long form. And it's not uncommon for the projects to come for a number of meetings, especially on something that is, you know, a special use permit, especially if it's something that they're going to be constructing, if it's not an existing building. So you might have multiple meetings with the applicant discussing all of these issues, aware of the criteria, okay, for the special use permit, making sure that all of these areas are addressed on the site plan. You can certainly ask them for a narrative, if you think that will assist you. And the other thing I forgot to mention, when you're looking at a site plan, I cannot stress this enough, you must read the notes. The notes are so important, so important, especially if they have a lot of description in the notes about landscaping. There should also be a lot of notes in detail for septic water, whatever. I skip those, that's what you have an engineer for. But any of the other notes that discuss other parts of the project, and it's very common to put the notes on the plan, please read those. They're very important. So after you potentially had a couple of meetings with the applicant, everything that you need to see on the site plan is actually drawn on the site plan to your satisfaction, you're going to need an environmental review. At some point in the process, hopefully early on in the process, you will type it under SECRE, and there are three types. Type 1, Type 2, Unlisted. Type 1 are those major projects. Type 2 are those projects that require no environmental review, so you can skip it, and unlisted it up is everything else. I'm going to imagine the overwhelming majority of what you're going to see is going to be an unlisted action. It is good practice to declare your intent to be late agency. That's done by motion. Once, so, once you've typed the action, you've got a complete site plan, all of the questions have been answered to your satisfaction, and you've determined that the site plan meets the requirements of everything that needs to be shown in your code, at that point, you can schedule the project for a public hearing. And you can do the, now, oh, here's another thing about SECRE. You do not need a public hearing for SECRE. Your environmental review can be done just solely on the basis of the EAF and whatever information the applicant's provided to you. I always recommend that it be part of the public hearing, because it's usually good to get input from the public when you're making a decision, especially if it's a project that has some interest in the community. You'll schedule the matter for a public hearing. Notices go out to the public pursuant to the code. They have to send out their notices, return receipt, and publication in your local newspaper with an affidavit of publication. Proof that the notice has been sent out and published must be received by the board before you can start your public hearing, and it must be noted in the minutes. Because again, somebody challenges your decision, and there's no proof in your record that the notices went out to the public, you're going to have a problem. So that needs to be noted. You probably already know if the project is within 500 feet of a state or county road or property, or a neighboring municipality, you're going to need 239 review from the county. And the county has 30 days to respond. And there might be other agencies that you would like some input from. I know that you do a lot of work with the UDC. I've seen in your minutes that you get them involved, which is great. They're a fantastic resource. Their regulations, you probably already know, are advisory. They're not mandatory. They can make suggestions or recommendations, but if you don't comply with them, there's nothing they can do about it. That being said, they are a tremendous resource. So after you have your public hearing, you would then do your environmental review, review your Part 2, again, more discussion. Make sure that you have all the information for your environmental review. I'm going to imagine that most every EAF that comes before you is going to have a hit for the bald eagle. I'm thinking you probably just can't get away from it. If that's the case, then the applicant should be providing you with a letter from the DEC or the DEC or the Heritage Foundation, saying there are or are not bald eagles in the area. And again, that's an example of maybe a condition being put on a project if it could have an impact on the bald eagle, or any other kind of endangered or threatened species. So you'll do your environmental review, you'll review the County two thirty-nine letter, they frequently include technical comments, you may wanna adopt them, they could also be a basis for some conditions on a project, and then you have sixty-two days to render your formal decision whether you're gonna grant or deny the project. So after you've done the public hearing, the two thirty-nine, the environmental, that's when you would then open your codebooks to page 107, and go through all of your factors and discussion to see to what extent this project complies with these criteria, if it should be granted, and if there should be any conditions. If the county is recommending denial of a project, but you wanna approve it, or if the county's recommending approval, but you wanna deny it, if you are going to take a position that is contrary to the county's recommendation, then you need a supermajority in order to pass it, which is a majority plus one. I've only ever seen that happen once, but it's something to be aware of. So, any questions? I know it's a lot of information. Any, okay. Multiple dwellings, which I found kind of interesting in your code, multiple dwellings, one other thing I forgot to mention, if you're reviewing a project that does not have its own specific criteria, like I said, campgrounds, bed and breakfast, they have their own criteria you can rely on there. If you're looking at a project that does not have its own criteria, you wanna take a look at the definitions. The definition section of the code is very important, and that will show you additional requirements that the project needs to meet. So multiple dwellings, so multifamily buildings, their special uses in GR, General Residential, and RB, Roadside Business District, but they're reviewed as a major subdivision. And I gotta tell you honestly, I read all about it, and I thought about it, and honestly, not quite sure how that gets done. But if you ever get an application for a multiple dwelling, just be aware it's reviewed as a subdivision. You also have a provision for planned unit development districts, which are permitted in three of your districts. The thing about the planned unit developments is that, once they go through the process, and there's a lot of town board involvement of what they can do, what planning board can do, once you go through the process for a PUD, Planned Unit Development, which will have a mixture of residential, residential, commercial, maybe some recreational, a whole bunch of different uses on a huge parcel of land, when that is finally approved, it becomes the equivalent of a separate zoning district with the criteria that are established in the review process. So that PUD would then end up somewhere on your zoning map. On your zoning map, you're probably familiar with your different zoning districts, your overlay. If the PUD is approved, you'll see, you know, that little area in a larger district, and that's your PUD. So it's kind of then stands alone on its own criteria. We have about ten minutes. Any questions on zoning and special use permits before I do real quick subdivisions? No? Okay, still awake? Okay. So you have major and minor subdivisions. Minor are five lots or less, once you get to the sixth lot, you're doing a major subdivision. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. The requirements are listed under the subdivision law, and again, includes all of the criteria that need to be shown on the site plan when you're considering a project. Both the minor and the major subdivisions start with a sketch plan, which is a fantastic way to start, so you can really have a good dialogue with the applicant or the developer to see what their thoughts are. In addition to what needs to be shown on the site plan, you have your design standards, which are similar to the performance standards under zoning, and the design standards talk about the layout of the section, the lots, the roads, the utilities, the drainage, if you're gonna have a park, all of the real technical requirements are included in there under Section 241-11 and 24114. So the minor subdivision is a one-step process, they submit their subdivision plat along with their environmental form, and they can get approval. The major subdivisions are a two-step process, they go through their preliminary process, they get approval on their preliminary plat, and then within six months of that preliminary approval, they come back for final approval. In my experience, most of these projects end up with final at the same time, because they've already done everything they need to do, or the only conditions they're waiting for might be a DEC permit, if they are dealing with wetlands or something like that, or they need Department of Health, or something for a sewage system, but those kinds of conditions don't need to come back in six months for final approval. Other thing that is particularly troubling about subdivisions is based upon a case out of the Town of Liberty, which is infamous throughout the state. You are supposed to complete your environmental review, determine whether it's a negative declaration, or you need an impact statement, before you schedule it for a public hearing on the subdivision. It's cumbersome, it's burdensome, it's what the law requires. So, once you have your complete application in terms of your site plan, and all the other information, perks and pits, and all of your engineering, you're supposed to do environmental review, which again, doesn't necessarily require a public hearing, and then after you've determined what the environmental impact is, then you can schedule a public hearing. What I usually recommend for large projects, and there's a twenty-one-lot subdivision going in in Forestburg, they did their public hearing for their environmental review, got their NAGDAC, following month, they're doing a public hearing for the subdivision itself. That is how the law says to do it. If it is a minor subdivision, you may feel comfortable doing the environmental review without a public hearing. In the past, there have been subdivisions where the public hearing for the environmental and the subdivision itself have been done altogether, that's not the proper legal way to do it, but when you're talking about somebody who has a giant piece of land, and they wanna cut off, you know, one parcel to give to their kid to build a house, maybe it's not such a big deal to do it altogether. But that's a determination that you need to make on a case-by-case basis. Again, once you have had your public hearing, you have sixty-two days to render your final In subdivisions, if you don't take any action within the time allotted, it's a default approval. So if you've gone through the public hearing, you want some more information, you're not really happy, you're not really ready to make a determination on the project, ask the applicant to extend the time, because when the applicant and the board consent to extending the time, you're not gonna have that default approval. And I've never had an applicant say no, because they know that if they don't consent to more time, you're gonna deny them. So applicants are usually very cooperative when it comes to that. Again, you have the waiver power under the subdivision law, which again, is very powerful, and you can waive any requirement or improvements that are not requisite in the interest of public safety, or are inappropriate because of inadequate connecting facilities. No request for it to be in writing under the subdivision code, unlike under the zoning code, so that's something that can just be discussed with the applicant if they wanna waive something, but again, must be documented and recorded in the minutes, and if you are gonna grant a waiver, it needs to be by motion. You have an application, take that back, you have a provision for conservation subdivisions, I don't know if you've had any of those, but conservation subdivisions are something that the county really tries to promote for a lot of different reasons. The thing to be aware of, mindful of my time, the thing to be aware of with a conservation subdivision is that the applicant needs to, have you gotten any of these applications in the last couple of years?
No.
No? Okay, so here's the thing to keep in mind about a conservation subdivision. So the theory with the conservation subdivision is that we have twenty-five acres, for example, and under our zoning code, because we have three-acre zoning, we can put in, math is not my strong point, we can put in fifteen houses, okay? But rather than doing them in a conventional subdivision that's laid out with streets, and every house is gonna be on its own three acres, we wanna cluster them, and we wanna put all the houses in this part of the parcel, and then we're gonna have all this open space down in the other part of the parcel. That's great. The first thing the applicant needs to do is, they need to do the calculations to figure out what the buildable yield is for a conventional subdivision. So if there are waterways, or natural rock outcroppings, that land should not count. So first thing that the applicant needs to do is figure out, how many homes can we get under a conventional layout? After that, they can redesign the project, put the houses closer together on smaller They should not be able to put more houses on a parcel of land, just because they call it a conservation subdivision. And I, and you do have some, I'm not sure if you had density bonuses, conservation subdivision. And it's pursuant to the zoning law, bounce back there, okay. If there are density bonuses, that is only after you've determined what the buildable yield is, so you don't want somebody coming in saying, "I've got twenty-five acres of land, I'm gonna cram thirty houses, because I'm gonna cluster them all together," can't do that. Needs to start with what they could do on a conventional subdivision, then we redesign, put it into a conservation subdivision. Last thing I'm going to state is about the open meeting, oh, lot line adjustments. Lot line adjustments, very basic, you have two parcels with a common lot line, they wanna move the lot line. It's exempt from subdivision. The key to a lot line adjustment, or a lot improvement, is that if you start with two lots, you're ending up with two lots. You can't start with one lot and end up with two lots and call it a lot improvement. The same number that you start with is what you come out with. And whatever the resulting lots are after they move the boundary line, must comply with the zoning requirements for that district in terms of setbacks for whatever structures or their lot area, that type of thing. Open Meetings Law. So you are the town planning board, you are a public body, you are subject to all of the open meetings laws, which means that when you are having a meeting, it needs to have public notice and public participation. All of your meetings must be publicized by whatever method you use, whether it be in the newspaper, website, posting in bulletin board, because your meetings are, because you're a public body, and you are required to have public meetings, all of your meetings must take place in public, and the public is welcome to come to any of your meetings. So because of that, two things derive. Number one, remember the public can come into a meeting, and they can tape-record, they can video record, they can do whatever they want, because it is open to the public, and if they wanna come, and a newspaper reporter wants to have his little recorder, and he wants to record what's taking place at your meeting, they can do that. But because all of your deliberations and all of your dealings must take place in public, you have to really be careful with email, okay? Email is great for disseminating information, one-way communication. Once you have a group email, and people start chatting and chatting back and forth, now you're having a meeting. Can't do that, because it's not taking place in public. So if you're gonna use email to distribute or disseminate information, one-shot with no response, that's wonderful, but cannot have a conversation or a dialogue back and forth, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Law. Questions? I know it was an awful lot of information I ran through very quickly, but I did try to help you out with some citations to your code for where these different parts are that you can refer to.
What you didn't mention on the lot lines, on the lot line adjustments, if you extinguish the line, then you end up with one lot where you had two.
I don't think an extinguishment is a proper lot line adjustment. In that case, what you really need is, well, you're gonna need common ownership, number one, and these lot line, excuse me?
That's what I mean, if somebody buys two lots side by side, and they wanna combine them in one.
Oh, they can do that through the assessor's office, they don't even need to go to the planning board. If there's common ownership of two neighboring parcels, and they wanna combine it into one tax lot number, they can do that through the assessor's office, they don't need to come to the planning board.
Becky, we're at this point being polite, and I'm taking the combinations to the planning board for their review.
Okay, and in that case, that's great. And frequently, when there are two lots that were from a previously approved subdivision, so if this board had approved a subdivision, and you have a subdivision for ten lots, and now there's somebody who wants to combine two of those, it's very common practice for the assessor to refer that to the planning board, because now they're changing the subdivision that you had previously approved, and I see that all the time. On the other hand, the lot line adjustments or the lot improvements, most typically, are neighbors who, for whatever reason, are buying and selling a strip of land amongst each other, and they're moving the lot line. In that case, the parcels have separate ownership. When you're dealing with the common ownership, it's a lot combination, not an adjustment, as Ken just mentioned. Does that answer it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions before we break off this one and go into the other one?
Nope. Okay, thank you all. If anybody has any questions after you've kind of digested this, after I bombarded you and made your brains explode with all this information, you can feel free to reach out to me in my office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay.
We'll see you guys all in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Did everyone get the email?
What do we do, just sign out now? What do we do, just sign out now, Crystal?
Yes, just, you're going to sign out. I'm going to kick everybody out of the meeting, and then we're going to join the other meeting.